So calling the January 18th, 2022 Library Board of Chappaqua Library Board of Trustees Meeting to Order, please rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
So, Happy New Year to everyone. And do we have any public comments? We have some attendees.
For housekeeping, if any attendee would like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand command and I will bring you in.
So.
I have a comment from Catherine Weinmark, the president of the Friends that she sent me, but it's for the strategic plan. Would you like me to read that now during public comment or during the strategic plan?
I think probably during the strategic plan. I think that's more most relevant.
Certainly.
So, because she would be able to speak then if she were here. So that's good. Okay, so first on the agenda, the Chappaqua Library Board of Trustees 2022 Propose Slate of Officers. In accordance with the Chappaqua Library Bylaws, Article Three, Officers, Section Two, Election and Term of Office. Hello, I'll read that later. The following slate of officers is presented for the 2022 calendar year. The election will take place at the beginning of the January 18th, 2022 board meeting. President Elizabeth Hameson, Vice President Lane Shea, Finance Officer Nishad Hadari, Secretary Shoray Anand. Article Three Officers, Section One, Officers, the officers of the library shall be the president, a vice president, a finance officer, and a secretary. Section Two, Election and Term of Office, the board shall, at its first meeting in each calendar year, elect the above-named officers from their own numbers to serve from the date of the meeting at which they are elected until the subsequent January and thereafter until their respective successors are elected. So I'm going to have the honor and privilege and pleasure of making a motion that we elect this slate of officers and I'll ask for a second. Anybody, please?
I'll second it.
Thank you so much. So, all in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? No. So it's my pleasure to turn the meeting over to our new president, Elizabeth Hameson. Liz?
Thank you, Ron. Thank you, everyone. I had a bit of technical difficulty with my sound. Did you already note that Lane is not here this evening?
Yes, we know Lane's not here.
Okay, excellent. All right. So we have, we have a, we have a nice agenda for tonight. We're going to go right into the acceptance of the minutes unless somebody has any comments on that. Okay, then the minutes are accepted as submitted. And then Ronnie, I think you're going to give us an update on the WLS trustee workshop?
Yes. So as I mentioned before, I've been attending these, these meetings of the WLS, it's some trustees and some of their board trustees and library trustees. And the purpose was to plan some meetings for all Westchester library trustees. So the first one will be sometime in late February, probably on a Wednesday. I don't have the exact date yet. They haven't decided that. And the topic will be advocacy. And that corresponds with, it's a good timing because March 2nd is Library Advocacy Day and NILA, the New York Library Association, has a lot of plans for that. And so at that, at that meeting, it'll be a good time for trustees to learn about advocacy. And this year, actually Advocacy Day is virtual. They were going to do hybrid, but now they've decided to do it all virtually. And there are different ways of advocating for your libraries. So it's something actually we talked about at our workshops. So I think it'll be very valuable and I'm hopeful that our, all of you will be able to attend. So that's my report. Thanks, Liz.
Thank you, Ronnie. Do we want to go to the auditor's report ahead of our reports? Or, or are we gonna have them wait for our reports?
Earlier.
I'll take your advice on that.
You're asking me?
Yeah.
Well, I think that that's actually your decision. I think that.
Okay. Then I think customarily, we do, when we have guests, we try to put them up front. So we'll, we'll let you guys take the floor and run us through your audit findings. All right, Jeff, Colleen?
Thank you. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. My name is Jeff Shaver. For those of you who don't know me, partner with PKF O'Connor Davies. Joining me, one square down and to the right, at least on my squares, is Colleen Harris. She's the supervisor with the firm. She was in charge of the field work, supervising all the audit test work we did. I'd like to thank Andrew and Joe for helping us out, making it a smooth process for us to get through all the, all the information we needed to. And there was a lot of work that, you know, that goes into what we're presenting here tonight. And hopefully everyone finds this helpful and informative. Before I start, what we've always done is presented a draft document to the board, or two draft documents rather, the, the financial statements and the report to those charged with governance are also referred to as the management letter. And assuming that the board has no, no issues, we move forward and, and with a, with a signed representation letter by management and we finalize the reports after the meeting. With that said, can I share my screen?
Yes, let me add you as a host. Okay, you should be able to share your screen now.
Okay. So can everyone see the financial statements and supplementary information?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. So I did some bookmarks here. I'm going to be moving around a little bit through the bookmarks. If you're anyone familiar with Adobe, feel free to interject at any point in time where you can certainly save your questions to the end. But with that, I will dig in. This is a 44-page PDF. I'm not going to go through every single page. I did the bookmarks just to highlight a few pertinent items that I want the board to, to see. I'm going to start off with the independent auditor's report. We talk about the, the report on the financial statement. So we define what that is. We discuss management's responsibilities for the financial statements. We talk about our responsibilities, auditors. And then on the second page, we actually get to the part where we say our opinion. And this is referred to as an unmodified opinion, otherwise known as a clean opinion. And that's the most favorable opinion that you can receive. What that means is the numbers in this document are fairly stated and the disclosures are completely inaccurate in all material respects. I have to apologize because the draft that I had sent to Andrew that was, you know, distributed to the board did not include these pages here, three or four pages of management's discussion and analysis. There's nothing contradicting the rest of the document in here. It was just administrative oversight on our part. So these three or four pages supplement what was already there. So I just wanted to point that out that if the page numbers you're following along don't quite match, this, this is why. With that said, I want to move right into the general fund. The, the library has a general fund and a capital projects fund. So keep in mind, I'll show you that, the capital projects fund separately. This is a four-column presentation for 2021, with the first column being the original budget as adopted by the trustees. The final budget, including any amendments or transfers throughout the year, the actual is the actual. And the fourth column is the variance between the final budget and the actual. You can see when the budget was adopted, it was anticipated 3.314 million would be collected in revenues, actual revenues for the year 3,335,000. That's 21,000 greater than the adopted budget. You can see the majority of the revenues comes in the form of property taxes, which flows through the town to the school district, to the library. And that comes in exactly as it was budgeted. On the appropriation or expenditure side of the budget, it was anticipated 3,224 million would be spent. Actual expenditures for the year 2.918 million. That's 306,000 less than the adopted budget. The biggest source of that surplus or underspending is mostly in the salary line. You'll see in personal services, $262,000, and also some of the related employee benefits, $83,202. So when you take the 305,000 expenditure underspending and over collection on the revenue side, you did better than the budget by 327,000. However, the board transferred some additional funds to the capital projects fund, which serves to, you know, reduce that surplus and set aside for, for capital projects. And the total amount transferred over was 391,406 versus what's in the adopted budget of 90,000. So because of that transfer, the net change in fund balance or the net increase in fund balance is $25,571. Applying that to the opening fund balance of 206,000, the general fund ends the year at 231,684. And I'll briefly show you the capital projects fund as I had mentioned. 436,000 of expenditures during the year. The majority of that was related to the roof project. The, on the flip side, you can see the 391,000 transferred in. That comes from the general fund. So we started the year at 781,000 capital projects funds, reduced it to 735,000. So that just means those funds are earmarked by the board for, for specific capital projects. On the balance sheet side, I'm just going to show you the combined, the general fund in the left column, capital projects fund in the right column, and total. In the third column, you can see the two funds add up to total ending fund balance of 967,000. And that's comprised of several components of fund balance. There's the non-spendable category of fund balance, which in the case of the library just matches prepaid expenditures. And that money is carved out or set aside because the library has already paid certain bills that relate to the subsequent fiscal year. And you can't spend that money again. You've already, you've already dispersed the cash. You have some restricted funds, which are defined as legally restricted by grantors or contributors. And that totals $40,000. The majority of your fund balance sits in the committed category, meaning that the board has, has designated or, or set aside these funds for a specific purpose. And you can see the majority of it's in the, set aside in the capital fund, 735,000. And then the unassigned category of fund balance or residual, which would be the total fund balance minus all the other categories, is $86,303. So that's what's left over after all the different categories are established. And that's for general use of the library at discretion of the trustees. So you can see the total fund balance comes to 967,000. Other items on the balance sheet, the assets are mostly in the form of cash, 1,633,000. There's some small receivable balances, prepaid expenditures, as I mentioned, 81,000. Most of that's for insurance. That's just prepaid before the end of the year. You have some payables and the ordinary course of business, the majority of which was related to that roof project where the work had been done prior to June 30th, but they, the bills weren't paid until subsequent to the balance sheet date. You have some accrued liabilities of 83,000, mostly for payroll, payroll or work done by employees not paid until after the balance sheet date. And due to other governments, 279,000. That's the employee retirement system invoice that's due back to the school. Since the state invoices them in full, they pay the bill, the library reimburses them. So that's a, a full year and a quarter of, of retirement invoices due, due to the school. So when we talk about governmental funds, meaning that the general fund and the capital projects fund, they're accounted for on, on the modified accrual basis of accounting, which means you don't recognize capital assets as an asset. You, you recognize them as an expenditure when you disperse the funds. You don't recognize long-term liabilities in, in the operating funds as well. They only come on the statement of net position or, or otherwise, we refer to them as the, as the full accrual financial statements. So it's not that the district doesn't, the library doesn't have any long-term liabilities or have any capital assets. They're just not accounted for here. So I wanted to highlight some of those items to you. You have at the top of the page here, a summary of the library's capital assets and the total value of those net of accumulated depreciation, $2.7 million. Also, you can see long-term liabilities summarized here in this chart. The net pension liability, it's $4,000 at the end of the year. That's the determined, determined by the state, New York State's actuaries, the library's portion of the state pension plans underfunded. You can see at the beginning of the year, it was 1.1 million. You're following the state's fiscal year in this case. So the, the reason for this significant drop was just fluctuations in the market. At March 31st of the previous year, if you had remember, March 2020, the stock market had significantly declined and it resulted in larger liabilities to the state and all municipalities participating in the plan. Come a year later, the market had really turned, turned positive and the liabilities shrunk for the state and all the municipalities. So you see that, that liability went from 1.1 down to about $4,000. Then there's the other post-employment benefit liabilities of about $3 million. And that's the value of health insurance as determined by your actuaries for not only current retirees who are receiving benefits now, but also employees who are working and earning benefits now. And then the last number is compensated abscences. And that would be the value of any crude time, could be sick, could be vacation time, that would be paid out when an employee retires or resigns. And that's 48,000. So the total of those long-term liabilities, 3,48,000. And what does this all boil down to? I mentioned before, the full accrual statements, it's referred to as the statement of net position. All the numbers roll up into the statement of net position. The operating funds balance sheets come in and we add in their fixed assets. So you see capital assets here of about 2.7 million, as I had mentioned before. And you see the liabilities also come forward and we add in the long-term liabilities. So the $3 million that I just went through shows up as liabilities on this balance sheet. And the deferred outflows of resources and deferred inflows of resources relate to the pension items. And those amounts are taken into expense or amortized over the next five to 10 years based on the accounting standards related, related to the pension plans. And it leaves you with net position or equity, if you would. It's a total, total equity would be a total of $500,000. Keep in mind, 2.7 million of that is tied up in fixed assets. So you can't use the fixed assets to, to pay down liabilities. So it's segregated here. And it leaves the library with an unrestricted deficit of about 2.23 million. It doesn't mean that the library's not solvent or not in good financial condition. It just means that the long-term liabilities are not funded, especially the other post-employment benefit liability of $3 million. Because New York State doesn't allow municipalities to set aside funds for that liability, it becomes an unfunded, unfunded liability that serves to increase the unrestricted deficit. So that's kind of the brief synopsis of the, of the financial statements. I just wanted to briefly take you through what we refer to as the report to those charged with governance. The beginning part of the letter is some auditors require communications. I'm going to gloss over that. There's not really anything significant or different or unusual that I need to point out to you. You know, the, the accounting policies of the library are sufficient. There were no changes in accounting policies. We didn't detect or become aware of any fraud. There were, you know, several journal entries we booked in the normal course. But there's nothing really glamorous or unique that we need to report to you, which certainly is a good thing. But we do have a few recommendations that we want to bring to your attention. And one is about, I think we did this last year as well, fund accounting, where, you know, the, right now, all of the, the records are kept in, in one, in one set of, one set of records or trial balance in QuickBooks. And we're recommending that because, you know, you're, you're required to report the general fund and the capital fund separately, not only on your financial statements, but also to the state. We recommend that you, from, from an accounting point of view, you separate those funds out. In terms of payroll terminations, one of the audit tests we do is we ask for a list of people who terminated or, or left the library in the year. And we look to see that they were taken off of the payroll to make sure they're not being paid after they're terminated. And we noted that two employees were removed well after their resignation date. So the recommendation is just to, you know, remove those and, and, you know, develop or try to develop a process whereby those terminated employees are removed right away. And one item that should have, it appears should have been going out to a public bid. Did, did not. If I'm, Colleen, am I saying that right?
That's correct. In our bid testing, where we look at vendors who were paid over a certain threshold, we noted that one vendor's expenses appear to, need to be like, follow the bidding process and that wasn't done. It's relating to the, to the roofing. It's like the first time you have expenses to that magnitude.
Can I say something about that? The roofing, we didn't have to go out to bid because of the, did anybody tell you that, that?
I can clarify, Ronnie. So this is not the recent roof project. This was the air handler project that was booked in 2019. We were able to discover three responses to a bid. We found the bid documentation. However, neither the library nor Atlantic Westchester had a signed copy of the final contract. And Bill, Mr. Link, let me know that they did not publicly advertise the bid for some reason. He stated that they were not required to. So although I did find the responses to the bids or to the bidding process, we were not able to verify that the, that it was publicly advertised, although we suspect it was. And we were not able to determine the signed contract. The members at Atlantic Westchester who had worked on the project are no longer with the company and they were unable to find a copy of the contract signed themselves.
Okay.
They honor the, was the proper price honored?
To my understanding, yes. We had a final payment this year from, or, well, I'm sorry, I can't remember off the top of my head if it was this year or last fiscal, probably last financial year relating to that project. It was a small amount, but it was left over from that project.
So this is, I think, new information to us. So at the very least, I would want to revise this because that, this makes it, the comment makes it seem like you didn't do anything where that's, that's clearly not, not the case here. So if you could, Andrew, maybe tomorrow or in the near future, send over what you have to us. I'd be happy to modify this to really state that it wasn't publicly advertised. I mean, I don't, I wouldn't note that there's no signed contract as long as the bid matched what you paid.
I think that was, I believe there was a change order. So it's, it wasn't the, so I can't, I'll have to look at the paperwork as.
Okay. I, I, I would want to, at least, at the very least, modify this to reflect better what actually happened. So if you, you know, we can certainly.
Yeah, I can scan over everything we were able to discover.
Okay.
I know you and I had been on the phone a bunch about, about the specific contract.
And you asked me about that, too?
Yes.
And I didn't know anything about that, that, you know, where the documents were. So, okay.
So with that said, that's all I had really for, for presentation. So we'd be happy to try and answer any questions the board might have.
We might also double check. I know we've had a lot of staff turnover, but we might just double check with our staff to see if anyone does know where it would have been advertised because I would imagine it probably was.
I would have thought, but I did reach out to Mr. Link, who's our facilities consultant. And he did tell me that it was not advertised. And I could not find any documentation with the other files about that. So.
Okay.
Well, we.
Thank you, Beth.
Ronnie, did you have something to say? Say that in the last couple of years, we've been following, doing things that properly as far as bids. That was something that was a problem in the past and it's been rectified. So that's why I was curious about which, what you were talking about because we've been very strict about that. So, but thank you. And it looks like you're going to resolve all this. So.
We will.
I had a quick question regarding the payroll. You said two employees were not taken off right away. Does that mean that they got paid after they were terminated or?
No. Colleen, you want to speak to that?
No, it wasn't that we saw that they were getting paid after their last day of working. It's just they, they were still in the system.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it's a, it's a control just to make sure we don't accidentally cut a check that we're not pending to.
Yes.
Okay. And then just real quickly on the fund accounting, because I know it's come up before and I thought we had done a better job of separating out our capital from our operating expenses. Are you looking for physically the money to be sitting in a separate place? Or are you looking for a different way to look at it in QuickBooks or two separate softwares? I'm just trying to really understand what, what we're supposed to do that we're missing the mark on.
So the money does not have to be segregated if you don't want it to be. It can be, but that's totally up to, to you folks on how you want to do that. What we would like to see is a separate trial balance for each of the funds. So one, just for the general fund and one for the capital fund. So QuickBooks is not exactly designed for governmental accounting, but some of our clients use it. We see it, you know, from time to time. And essentially Joe's going to probably understand what I'm saying. So you have to set up a separate QuickBooks file for the two funds. It's a little bit cumbersome because QuickBooks is not designed for this, but it works. It, it can work.
Yeah, I, I will, I will address that.
And if you have, you know, when you're working on it, if there's anything that, you know, we're available to, to, to speak to you or try and help out if there's anything that, you know, not making sense, we're certainly willing to help you as much as we can.
And as far as the utility of the net positions worksheet, would it, would it behoove us to compare net positions from year to year? Or like, how are we supposed to be using that?
When you say net position, you're referring to on the full accrual.
When you say net position, you're referring to on the full accrual, the.
Yes.
Well, you can compare from year to year, but ultimately. And, and there is something in the M D N A that shows at least a two year. You know, it actually went up this year. And I can share this quickly. So you can see, I mentioned the four hundred ninety-four thousand. Was this year's ending net position. Last year was actually in a negative, negative fifty-eight thousand. And the, the unrestricted deficit did decrease somewhat. But ultimately. It's a reflection of these long-term liabilities that are largely out of control of the library, so. I mentioned that the pension liability as allocated down from the state dropped quite a bit, so that helped. And the O P E B liability. If it goes up or down is going to heavily impact this number. What most local governments do. Um, is focus on fund balance, how much, how much fund balance they have because. That is more in their control. Um, and it focuses on spendable resources. Uh, how much in, in funds do you have to spend on your capital projects? Well, as of, as of June thirtieth, that number was seven hundred and. Forget the number, but you know, seven hundred and some thousand. Um, and in the general fund, you're in the positive. So, you know, if that number was in a negative, I would be ringing alarm bells to you that watch out, you're not, you're not. You're not in a good financial situation, but that's not the case. So I just want to emphasize that. I know, I know negative numbers don't look good. But it's really a function of these long-term liabilities that. Are somewhat out of your control.
Does anyone else have any questions for Jeff or Colleen? Okay, um, thank you very much for this presentation. I think, do, do we now, but we'll, we'll, I'll take a motion to accept the draft.
No, we don't have to do that. We don't have.
Have to.
No, because they'll send us the final version and then we'll vote on that at the next meeting.
So just to be clear, everyone, everyone's comfortable, we can move to finalize these.
With the noted changes that we discussed.
Yeah, on the, on the management letter, certainly we'll, we'll iron that out, but, okay, clear.
Excellent. Thank you guys so much. We appreciate you coming back again and doing another stellar job. And Joe, thank you and Andrew and everyone who assisted at the library for getting this done. I know it's a big undertaking.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Thanks, Colleen.
Yeah, thanks, Jeff. Thanks, Colleen.
Thank you.
Okay, so, um, for the president's report tonight. Thank you all for the vote of confidence. I just want to keep it short and, and say a thank you to Ronnie. I think we all know that Ronnie has served more than a term as president as she took over. Early for an outgoing, um, president who moved out of town. And it has been a, uh, quite a, um, a lot has happened under your tenure, Ronnie. You took over during the pandemic and admits the bond construction. And the last few years have been super busy. Uh, we completed a major roofing project, the five-year strategic plan. Um, and if that's not enough, we also hired our, all our leadership, including our new director. Uh, Andrew Farber. So we really have to thank you for your leadership and we are so grateful for your ongoing efforts and dedication to the library. Thank you, Ronnie.
Thank you, Liz, very much.
We're, we, I, I have personally really enjoyed the department head updates. I think that was one of the things that you added to these. Uh, monthly trustee meetings that, that is, uh, very helpful in terms of thinking about budgeting. And what the library needs and keeping the public informed. And, um, so I, I would like to continue those, um, and thank you for bringing that to the board. And the continuing education that you've been doing and spearheading for our. Board has been really wonderful and, um, has been encouraging even to do more beyond that outside of those. Workshops. So I'm looking forward to ongoing continuing education. And, um. And I think we're going to hear more about our strategic plan and how we move through the next five years a little later on tonight. But thank you truly. And, uh, we have a workshop, we have a, um, a workshop coming up on February first. Uh, but now I'm going to turn it over to Andrew for the director's report.
Thank you, Liz. Uh, I'd like to also start by thanking you, Ronnie, for your, your, uh, term. Term and a half, I should say. Uh, it's been a pleasure working with you, um, since I started, actually, so. Congratulations. Thank you for everything you've implemented and worked, uh, to do. Uh, Liz, congratulations on moving to the presidency. Uh, I know you will also do an excellent job. Several updates on buildings and grounds. Uh, the potholes have been filled. Uh, thankfully we got those. Filled before the first storm of the season. Uh, we've received a proposal from Mr. Tong, um, regarding the outdoor, uh, space plan. We may be, uh, having to go to a formal bid process, uh, depending on the cost. Mr. Link, uh, has reached out to another. Uh, vendor, uh, PCI of Parsippany, New Jersey to discuss the stream channel improvements and master plan as well. He expects to meet with them next week and he's looking for a potential third company. As I said, if the costs are as high as expected, we will most likely need to go to a formal bid process, uh, for that. We had multiple parking lot, uh, lights that were out. Those have all been replaced. The protective cover for the bench is now in place in the children's room. Uh, that has gone through, uh, it's, looks very nice and, um. Really does a good job. The study rooms are in the process of being repainted before being reopened to the public. David has been doing an excellent job of helping, uh, touch the library up in all of our different locations. Uh, we still have the art gallery to finish repainting as well. Uh, we are in the process of searching for two, uh, replacement staff still. Miriam Safrah, uh, from our adult reference desk, um, as you know, has left. And so we are looking for a part-time librarian to replace her, uh, and I have, uh. Been canvassing the staff assistant library list, uh, and in the process of that personnel, uh, replacement. We have temporarily removed, uh, seating from the public areas and limited the use of computers during the current surge in COVID nineteen. As the numbers begin to drop, we'll be reinstating our services, uh, as per our safety plan. We've begun planning our centennial celebration, be hosting programs throughout the year and will partner with other community organizations. The actual birthday is June twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two. Begun planning for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget year and have been meeting with the department heads. For budget requests. I'll be meeting with the, uh, the, uh, finance committee, uh, tomorrow to begin our discussions. Westchester Library System is continuing to switch over to new technology. We're waiting on equipment to arrive to migrate the wireless network. Uh, and they will then take over our Verizon, uh, accounts for FiOS. Uh, so thankfully that will be a few less bills that everyone needs to review. They have also begun work on migrating libraries email domain to check library.org. Our existing emails will continue to work, uh, and forward to the new ones. Uh, and all of the staff will be receiving work email accounts. We're in the process also of determining those generic email accounts, uh, as you mentioned, um, treasurer. Right now we have board director, uh, but we're going to create, uh, all of the generic inboxes as, uh, Nishat had mentioned to keep the history. Of any communications and not tied to any individual member. Uh, work on the branding is continuing. Um, we've met with two and two and we'll be meeting with the whole, um. Communications Committee shortly. Uh, that is my report.
I have a question. So the, um, migrating of the email addresses, when do you expect? Cause we should get them too and the chat board one.
Yes, I don't have a date from the library system. Uh, we will be the pilot organization for that move. Uh, they have gotten in touch with Lyle Anderson, uh, who had set up our accounts in the beginning and who the account was under. But they have some work on the backend to do, uh, so it should be early in the, in this year.
Okay, and so the, all the staff will have. Email. They won't use their personal emails anymore.
Correct.
Thank you, Andrew.
You're welcome.
Are there any questions on the director's report? Okay, um, then we'll move on to finance, um. Joe, thank you for putting together the treasurer's report. Does anyone have any questions for Joe? Or first, Joe, does there anything you'd like to add to your report?
No, not, nothing. I think that the statements pretty much present themselves. It looks. It looks as though, uh, you know, we seem to be right on target with budget through the six months. A lot of the categories are right around that fifty percent. Mark, at least the more significant. Budget items are, so. I think, I think we're in good shape as we move along. Next, next month. Uh, we will be adding another column to, to the, uh, the first page of the report to reflect, uh, projections. Uh, through the end of the year. And we'll be up, updating that each month as we move along.
That's great. That'll be great addition. Any questions? Can I have a motion to approve the treasurer's report for?
We don't approve the.
Yeah, sorry. Okay.
The next.
All right, so then the next item is the, uh, December twenty twenty-one statement. May I have a motion?
I'll, we approve the December twenty twenty-one statement.
Do we have a second?
A second?
Nishat will second. Any questions?
No.
Then let's vote. All in favor? I. Okay, passed unanimously. Next up is the review of the capital fund. Are there any questions on the capital fund?
I just want, have one thing. So they were talking about. Having different categories, right, Joe? And.
Yeah.
We, but we have, like we say, we have funds for the roof. And we now have this second account that, um, we just started. So that happened after the, um, fiscal year. So I think we're doing things right then, correct?
We, we are. I think, I think what Jeff was referring to was, uh, more of. You know, just the presentation that we, you know, we give to them. Uh, in separating the capital fund to a separate, a separate set of books. Basically, but the numbers, the numbers don't change. It's just. It's just in a, in a format, a, a different format than what we're doing now.
Okay. So you'll, you're going to come up with a separate trial balance for the general and the capital fund. And then that'll finalize that. The last thing we need to do because. In the prior, um, cycle, we took care of the actual splitting of the money. And now we just need the paperwork to catch up.
Right.
Excellent. Any other questions? Okay, um, then we'll move on to the January bills. Can I have a motion to approve the January bills, Ronnie?
I move that we approve the January twenty twenty-two bills.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Nishat will second. All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry. Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor? I. Passed unanimously. Okay.
I have, uh, Liz's facilities report, so I can give that in his stead if you'd like.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Bill has reached out to PCI of Parsippany, New Jersey to discuss the stream channel improvements and exterior master plan, as I had mentioned. Uh, he'll be meeting with them next week. Uh, he has received a proposal from Atlantic Westchester to replace a heating pump for HVAC in the children's room. The proposal is an amount of forty-two hundred eighty-six dollars and two cents. Uh, he checked the cost of materials, uh, at the supply house does exceed twenty-five hundred dollars. Um, as an update, the pump is backordered and we expect to receive it shortly.
I'm sorry, can you, can you repeat the numbers?
Certainly, uh, the proposal was in the amount of forty-two hundred eighty-six dollars and two cents. Um, and the cost of the materials were over twenty-five hundred dollars. Uh, the, uh. Proposal from this was brought up at the last board meeting, so we also have that information there. But, uh, the pump is backordered, so hopefully that will be here soon. Uh, the radiator covers under the new bench in the children's room have been completed. Um, and Bill is out of town from January fifteenth to the twenty-third. Uh, he will be able to respond to emails each evening and will be making adjustments to the, um. The B M S, which is our, the software that controls the HVAC unit, uh, remotely. And that is his report.
Thank you. Um, on, on that backordered, uh, do we have to do anything on that?
No, once it comes in, Atlantic will bring it over. They'll install that, uh, they'll get in touch with him to schedule so that he'll be there to make sure there's no issues. That, and we'll be up and running. We'll have a full, fully functioning HVAC system for the first time in, in several months, so knock on wood. It will, uh, address the issues we've had.
Excellent. Yep. Okay. I don't believe we have any personnel motions this evening, right?
That is correct. We don't have any.
All right, then we're going to move on to committee reports. Shoray, do you want to give us the centennial committee report?
The committee met. Okay, so committee met and scheduled a timeline for the key events, uh, including when press releases to go out and over. An overall publicity plan. A timeline for a, a library display and pole banners, time capsules, capturing community stories and. Arranging for speakers. Um, the next step is for the administration, administration to work out the logistics. Of the programs with department heads and so we can. Come up with some sort of calendar and for the director to provide, um. A proposed budget for the, for these activities.
And the press release was sent out. I'll add that because I'm on the committee. That was sent out last week.
For the first press release.
One announcing it, right?
Yeah.
That's great. Thank you, Shoray. Does anyone have any questions for Shoray? Okay, then we'll move on to the communications committee report.
So the communications committee, we haven't met because we're waiting to, we will be meeting soon as Andrew mentioned. We're just waiting for more, um, the information from two plus two. And I know they've been working on, uh, the branding, so that's all we have to report at this time. Hopefully we'll be able to have a report. We'll meet with them before the next board meeting, Andrew.
Yes.
That's great. It's, it, um, you know, the, between the December meeting and the January meeting is not as much work time as we would like. So we will, we'll look forward to hearing from you, um, at the February meeting. Excellent. Um, Andrew, are, do you have an update for us on the long-range strategic plan?
Yes, I do. Um, as you all saw, and I, I apologize for the confusion. Uh, with the strategic plan sending that out, uh, last week. Uh, but thankfully on Saturday, you, you received the correct, most updated. Version of the plan. Uh, the committee met, um, uh, multiple times, uh, between these board meetings. Uh, to take all the input and suggestions we received from the board members, um, and from the other committee members. Uh, we really fleshed out our metrics. Uh, we tightened up some of our goals. Uh, we, uh, have done, thank you, Ronnie, for the copy editing. Uh, we've really put a lot of, of work into this and hopefully. The board will be happy with this draft and we can make the final presentation, uh, at our next meeting. If there, uh, I did not receive any comments. If there, I did not receive any comments from any board members or suggestions. Catherine Weimark, the president of the Friends of the Chapqua Library, sent me a brief statement to read. She is at her current board meeting. They had to move their meeting to the, the same evening as ours. But she says, having been part of the previous five-year plan, this team has done hours more work and variable research to build a plan based on facts and feedback from the community. This new plan sets us up for meaningful success. So overall, I think we're in a very good place with this plan. We will be sending out, just, we have a little more copy editing to do. And sending out a fully formed plan very shortly for the board to just take a look at. Really, we were looking for any last feedback from the board to update the strategic plan before submitting the, the full plan, Ronnie.
Yeah, and we're planning to vote on this at the budget work sessions meeting on February 1st, right?
Correct.
Right.
Okay, just so everybody knows that. And I'll finish up the last bit of editing as soon as Andrew's, you send me the, the, the latest version that I can, that's not.
Absolutely. So Nishat, Liz, you both, Tao, you all worked tirelessly with me on this project. I really appreciate all of your hard work. I don't know if you have anything to add to what I've said, but I really, I really thought this was a very valuable process to go through. We got a tremendous amount of input from our community between the interviews and the surveys, looking through our data. It was, it was really eye-opening and we're excited to be able to take what we learned, put it into an actionable plan that's strategic in nature and then, you know, target the library for the next five years and move us forward.
Yes. I think you said it really well. And I mean, as a trustee and being a part of this, it was, it was wonderful to see how many communicate, community members gave us time to think about the library and give us feedback to help us shape the plan to do the most we can with the funds that we collect from our community. So I just want to underscore that we had a really nice community involvement and I appreciate everybody who turned in a survey or talked to us as part of this process. And thank you to everybody who worked on this and supported us along the way.
Well, thank all of you for all your hard work because it was a lot of work and I appreciate that very much. So.
Thank you, Ronnie. It's really been, we've had a, you know, a great run. So our, our next work session is on February 1st. Our next trustee board meeting will be on the 18th of February at 7:30. And if there's nothing else, I would request a motion to adjourn our meeting. Ronnie?
I move that we adjourn the meeting at 8:25 PM.
Do I have a second? All in favor? I. Excellent. The meeting is adjourned at 8:25 PM. Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.
Thank you. You as well.